Okay, I'm showing it's 6:31. If I can get everybody to their seats, we can get this meeting going. I appreciate it. Computers are running just a smidgen slow tonight. No, not a problem. Wow, this got quiet in a hurry. I'm just, before we actually get started, I'm gonna show you this shirt and I will talk about it during reports. I am so excited.
I'm gonna show my tan.
And we're gonna show Kathy's tan. And we're really glad she's back, 'cause we missed Okay. Well, two, four, five. We got five people. We're okay. City Council meeting for May 23rd, 2011 now come to order. Please remember times indicated, our approximate start times only. Turn off all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Notice how we don't say pagers anymore, 'cause nobody has them. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes, council, are your lights flashing at your desk?
Yes.
As I call your name, please press your light to indicate your presence.
Okay.
Uh, if Ms. Carson is on her way, is that what I heard? Uh, Mr. Benson, excuse me, Mr. Benson, when I call her name, if you could reach over and press her button, just for that purpose, and then when she does come in, Ms., Mayor, if you will note for the record what time she came in-
You got it.
-so we can mark that on the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Natow.
Here.
Mayor Protem Snyder.
She is at ICSC in Las Vegas.
Councilman Moreno.
Here.
Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
She is supposed to be on her way.
Thank you. Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman, uh, Councilman McEldowney.
He also is at ICSC.
And Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. First item is rising for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance, but I want to include in that tonight is to remember the people from Joplin, Missouri. They're right now at 116 confirmed, um, which is, we've just absolutely been getting killed. The other thing is, I happened to go to a 9/11 Freedom Rally this past weekend and they talked about our soldiers and stuff, and the numbers are just disheartening as to how much has happened since 9/11. Uh, they talk about, uh, and this is really, it's to honor and respect all those that serve and protect, not just our soldiers, but they're talking about 13 police officers and 11 fire department, three AMS, 83 active duty just here. Um, the numbers are staggering. If we can keep all of them in our prayers, um, it would be really great. Uh, if we could just stand now for a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, Ms. Carson is here and it's 6:35. Thank you. Uh, will city staff please pass around the microphone? And it's really nice seeing a full house tonight. Joe Sandoval.
Officer Chris Dickey.
Phil Baca, Chief of Police.
Sandra Campbell.
Evelyn Bruen.
Kiana Miller.
Natania Miller.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Ellen Haug.
Gavin Mallett.
Michael Cheney.
Tova Forga.
Crystal Elliott.
Robert Tapes.
Larry Quintana.
Joy Bishop.
Gene Lefle, Board of Adjustment.
Cindy Hagerman, Neighborhood Services.
Joy Wassendorf, Communication Infrastructure Group.
Michelle Harmio, Victim Services.
Greg Clements, Public Works Department.
Jenny Rose.
Leander Quinn.
Nicole Keys.
Ann Keys.
Karen Keys.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Chris Stockton, Heartland Urban Garden.
David Pox.
Daniel Leary.
Sam Hammett.
Michelle Halsted, Director of Communications.
Arisali Hanton from Heartland Urban Garden.
Michael Scanlon, Heartland Urban Garden.
Okay, thank you very much. We have two proclamations tonight. Um, one of them is for, well, they're both.
Break for Bella.
Yeah, I have it. Um, the first one is Break for Bella. And Commerce City offers its support to Communications Infrastructure Group in its grassroots driving awareness campaign. Uh, we're gonna be presenting, join, uh, I'm sorry, join Wasserdoff from CIG with this proclamation recognizing the Break for Bella Summer Safe Neighborhood Driving Awareness Campaign. It's gonna begin the last week of May and continue through August of 2011. And I'm gonna read the proclamation now, and then I'm gonna ask Joy to come forward and say a few words. That gives you a few chance to get some words together, huh? Whereas coinciding with the traditional end of the school year, the summer months of June through August represent increased activity among children in neighborhoods and surrounding streets. And whereas motor vehicle crashes are the leading cause of death for children two to 14 years of age. And whereas residential speeding is one of the single greatest complaints, according to police departments and city council representatives throughout the United States. And whereas focused and alert drivers who adhere to the posted neighborhood speed limits make our streets inherently safer for pedestrians, bikers, and other drivers. And whereas it is our duty as concerned citizens and parents to educate children about the importance of practicing safety and awareness while playing in neighborhoods. Now therefore be it resolved that I, on behalf of the city council, hereby recognize the Break for Bella Summer Safe Neighborhood Driving Awareness Campaign, starting the last week of May through August of 2011. If I could get a motion to approve this before I give it to Joy. Ms. Teeter?
So moved.
Ms. Carson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same, proclamation passes. And Joy, if you would come forward? Does the council want to come forward for a photo or? Would you like to come on this side? You can face the audience. How would that be? And you could speak? Well, we're gonna take a picture. It's just so, there's actually an, I used to tell people, there's no camera, there's no film in the camera, but now with the cameras, that doesn't work anymore. So would you like to say a few words first?
You bet.
Good evening. My name is Joy Wassendorf, and I'm here to thank the city council for issuing a proclamation supporting our first year of the Break for Bella campaign. Uh, I work at the public relations firm Communication Infrastructure Group, and in the summer of 2009, a colleague's daughter, Bella, was hit by a speeding car through her neighborhood. While I'm glad to report that Bella is a happy, healthy, and fully recovered seven-year-old today, that experience deeply affected everyone on our team and moved us to action. We ask every resident of Commerce City to consider these facts. Residents for speeding and unsafe driving through school zones is among the top complaints to the Commerce City Police Department. And the death rate on residential streets is more than twice that on highways. And lastly, deaths from automobile and pedestrian accidents increased 16% in summer months. But we, the people, drivers, parents, and even our children, can reverse these trends. We can watch our speed in neighborhoods, put away our cell phones and other distractions, and pay more attention to our driving. We can talk to our kids about safe neighborhood playing habits and remind them to always look both ways before ever crossing a street. We invite the public to participate in the Break for Bella campaign and join our call to action by visiting CIG-pr.com or by liking our cause on Facebook and taking our driver's pledge. Please help us spread the message and visit facebook.com/breakforbella and get involved today. Thank you.
getting rampant in our society today, um, and this is just one example of, of what's happening. And it's, it's extremely sad to see, to see this. Um, personal life is, is becoming almost worthless, you know, with the way some people act. Uh, because of this, we've, we've decided to send out this proclamation. And it says, whereas eight-year-old Dejon Quinn-
Eighteen.
Eighteen, I'm sorry. And I even says eighteen. Uh, was a special and vibrant young man who stayed busy with school activities, enjoyed all sports, especially basketball, football, and baseball. And whereas he recently graduated from Adams City High School, was gainfully employed, and was preparing to serve our country in the armed forces. And whereas Dejon Quinn loved and was loved by his family and all those who met him were touched by his friendly smile, politeness, and positive attitude. And whereas on Sunday, March 27th, Dejon Quinn lost his life to a senseless act of violence while walking to the convenience store. Whereas the Commerce City Police Department is still working diligently to solve this case and requires additional information to help with the investigation. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council, I hereby proclaim special recognition and honor the life of Commerce City resident Dejon Quinn. Be it further resolved that we encourage community members to come forward with any information that can help bring closure and peace to this family. Ms. Teeter, did, did you wanna?
Are we gonna go down there?
We're gonna, yes. Do you just wanna-
I just wanted to welcome the family. I know how difficult it is. Um, I, um, I had a son that passed, but not in such a violent way as this. Um, I did visit the memorial site, and we, as council, have directed staff in possibly putting a camera on 64th Avenue there and Holly Street. So I'm happy to see all of you here, and we're all so deeply sorry, and we feel for you. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Uh, I do just wanted to convey my sympathies to the family. Um, I remember I actually was headed home on the night that Dejon was, was murdered. And I remember seeing all the lights and actually even seeing the ambulance and thinking, why is it getting on the highway? Uh, it's not going to someone's house. It's, what, what is it doing? And not knowing what was going on. And, uh, when I found out, I didn't, I didn't sleep much that night, uh, because it was, it was a senseless attack of violence on your family, and it was a senseless attack of violence on this community and the safety that each of these, each of our residents believe, um, that they're getting when they move to a community. Um, I'm so very sorry for your loss.
Mr. Bullock?
I would like to make a motion, um, to, um, accept this proclamation as stated.
Can, Ms. Carson, did you wanna make a statement first?
Yeah, I just wanted to send out my heartfelt condolences to the family. I'm so sorry that this tragedy happened to you.
Okay. Mr. Benson, did you wanna make a statement?
Well, yes, I think we all feel the way that this proclamation reads, and this is an act of this city. And, uh, I know that our police department is working on this, as it says, very diligently, and I hope that they're gonna be able to bring the perpetrators to justice very soon.
Okay. Mr. Bullock, I have a motion from you. Mr. Moreno, did you wanna second that?
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same, proclamation passes. Could I, I don't know if the whole family would like to come down and say something, or if someone would like to come forward?
Paul, did you want us down there?
I'm sorry.
In that way, you'll be facing the audience, and you don't need to be as very close to it, Bert, to pick up.
On, uh, March 27th, a big part of me died, and, uh, it's really been hard for me to get back on track. But the community of Commerce City has showed me a tremendous, tremendous amount of love. And I do mean a tremendous amount. I mean, the words can't explain how they have supported me in, in so many different ways. I understand strange things happen. And believe me, this is a very strange thing. And I don't really understand it, but I am dealing with it. I just wanna say thank you to the community for all that you have, have done for me and my family. And it just doesn't seem to stop. There is so much love running through my community. Just so much. And, and I appreciate everything everyone has done to this point. And, uh, I'm gonna cry. So, thank you. Come on, babe.
Hello, everyone. Um, I just wanna thank the police department, all the detectives working on this case, and for sure Commerce City community. You guys have been wonderful. And it just goes to show, when somebody is taken out of time, a good person, how much love has been bouncing back on all of us. And we still get calls from people that, uh, are watching it on the internet. And I just thank God, because he was a very, very special young man. And he was my oldest grandchild, period. And, I mean, I had a love affair with him. I loved him so much. But I just wanted to say to you guys, I drove all the way across town, 'cause I thank you guys for everything that you're doing, and I know you're working hard on this, and we really do appreciate it. Oh, thank you guys so much. God bless you guys. Did you wanna say something? His mother.
Did you wanna come up? No? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Um, just to get us back on track, why don't we take just a couple of minutes, and then we'll get back to the meeting. We're just gonna take a minute, and then I'm gonna have Chief Baca come up for just Chief, did you wanna come up maybe now before the family left?
My name is-
Did you wanna come up now before the family left?
Yeah, my name is-
Sure. I just pushed the button, sir.
Here we go. Uh, I just wanted to, first of all, thank the city council for drafting and preparing the proclamation on behalf of the city. I'm, I'm sorry, on behalf, from the city, on behalf of the family. And I'd also like to, uh, just reiterate for the record that we continue to work very diligently on the case. Uh, it's a difficult case, but we will continue to work on it. Uh, Lead Detective Brian Vandemere is here this evening, um, and we will continue to follow every lead we possibly have. Uh, so I encourage any community member that either is here this evening, or here's my message, to please come forward if you know anything at all, whatever fact that may be. You may not even realize, uh, that it is a fact, but if you have any information whatsoever, please contact, uh, the police department. And we have a tip line. I think that number is 303-289-3626. Uh, so if you can contact us that way, if you wish to remain anonymous, or you can simply come to the police department, and we will, uh, make sure that we gather the information if you have any. Uh, additionally, uh, this, uh, case will be, has already been presented to Crime Stoppers, and Crime Stoppers will, uh, more than likely air this information sometime this week. We don't have the exact date. Uh, that will also, uh, help. So, again, uh, my condolences to the family, on behalf of every officer on the police department, also from the city. And, uh, rest assured that we will continue to work as we, as diligently as we possibly can. But if you have any information, please do not hesitate to contact us at any time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, um, I think, I think that's what Michelle is doing. We're doing, just give a couple of minutes. If the family would like to, to leave now, they're welcome. If, they're welcome to stay, but, um, if they, you know, if they'd like to leave, this would, we'll just give it a couple of minutes. And again, I don't need to probably repeat this, but realize that your family's in her Okay. Those are not easy, especially when they're senseless, as this one definitely was. Next item is citizen communication. Um, as usual, there were two public comment rosters made available on the table at the entrance as you came in. The first one was for non-agenda items. The second one was for action items that might have been listed on the agenda. When I call your name, if you please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Remember that you are limited to three minutes, and city councils are reminded they are not to engage in discussion or debate. May ask clarifying questions, express concern when appropriate. City manager will generally assign staff members to get the necessary information to solve problems. Have two people on the list tonight. The first one is David Good evening, sir.
Hello, council. David Pox, 9550 East 112th Place. And I'm here today because I live at the Dunes, and we are located just east of where Lafarge was digging for many years. And their trucks took quite a toll on 112th. And from my understanding, I read somewhere that they were supposed to fix that road when they were done, um, digging. And while they've been done for a while, their signs are down, and I think it's time to fix that, especially that intersection at 112th and Brighton.
Okay. Mr. McBroom, if you would get the information you need from Mr. Pox, and if you would also get back to council on whatever the response is. Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
And it's nice to see the kids here. Welcome.
The head of pride with ice cream.
Uh, you know, whatever works. Sometimes that's what they do with me. Next person on the list is Michael Cheney. Good evening, sir. Nice to see you again.
Good evening, members of council. Michael Cheney, 7980 Holly Street. Today I'm here on the be, request of some of my fellow NUSA conference attendees. One of the fun things to do at NUSA, one of the icebreakers, is they, people from all over the United States, when they show up at these, they bring the little lapel pins from their cities, and they trade them, and it makes for a great icebreaker. When you're meeting someone from Birmingham, Alabama, or St. Louis, Missouri, it's a great way to start up a conversation and to share ideas. And those of us that are attending, we're wondering if we might be able to get a few from the city council.
I'll bet you that's gonna be an easy fix, Mr. McBroom. You talk-
Mr. Mayor, could you call on me?
I, I will in just a second, Mr. McBroom. If you will make sure you get a hold of him and, and take care of that. I know that that's something that we have done in the past. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, Mr. Cheney, could you explain what the conference is you're going to?
This is the, uh, NUSA, or Neighborhoods USA. And it's an annual conference that brings neighborhood groups from all over the United States together to exchange ideas and, uh, discuss how they're handling problems in their community, and ways of improving their community. Uh, it deals on everything from how do you keep kids active after school? How do you make sure that the house that you're living in, or your neighbors living in, is not causing them to get sick? Um, how do you go through and do some redevelopment of your neighborhood? It's, uh, a pretty good little thing. One of the seminars that I'll be attending this year is, uh, what happens when the surveyor flags show up in your driveway? How do you get involved in, in land use management plans with your local municipality? And, uh, so I'm, I'm really excited about some of this stuff.
Great. Well, Mr. Cheney, I was a-
Well, Mr. Chaney, I was ahead of the curve.
So I have the buttons for you, and I want you to cut them off. Anybody that's going on it, I'll already put there any ones for standing. Okay. Another question? Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Marino?
Well, Mike, clearly Councilman Bullock rated the storage closet before I did, and I only got 15. I don't know how you got that many, but my partner in crime, Lynn Halliwell, helped me out with 15 of them, so I have 15 for you as well.
Oh, well, thank you very much. I will be sure. The other thing I wanted to ask was, is after we get back, I was going to see if maybe, because there's 10 of us going, and we're trying to hit all the different seminars, I was going to see if you guys would be interested in letting us come in and give a little presentation of what we saw, what we did, and a little bit about what we brought back to the city.
That would be a wonderful idea. We love when people come back.
Okay. I will, I will be sure to orchestrate that through the, the 10 of us that are going.
That would be great. Thank you so much. Just remember, you need to put those in the bag you're checking.
I don't have any one that I can check.
Okay, there's only one resolution tonight for Council's consideration. It's Resolution 2011-31. It is a resolution approving an extension of rebates and benefits for the economic development. Mr. McBroom, will you be presenting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Members of Council. Just very briefly pursuant to City Council's discussion at last Monday night's meeting, staff has prepared a resolution that would extend the city's economic development incentive program for three months until September 1st, 2011.
Mr. Marino?
Prepare to make a motion.
Terrific. Are there, before we get the motion, are there any questions or discussion? Okay, I'll let, get the, get some motion. Mr. Marino, do you want to make the motion?
Move approval of Resolution 2011-31.
Ms. Teeter?
Second motion?
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? Just so people know how even some of us get involved, we had just horrible hail in River Run last Wednesday, and the, the insurance guy was out, so I will be taking advantage of this very soon. So, Mr. Benson, did you have a comment?
Yes. Mr. McBroom, I, from talking to you at other times, I'm presuming that this program has been very successful. Is that what you're saying?
Staff believes the program has been successful. It has generated economic development within the community. I don't know if Ms. Morris has, has planned to do this, but we would be happy to make a presentation to City Council at a future meeting to review in more detail the benefits from the incentive program.
Well, if you all think it's been helpful, I think we ought to extend it.
Mr. Marino, did you have a comment?
Just wanted to add, we do have Sam Mamet in the crowd from the Colorado Municipal League. I attended a workshop with the Colorado Municipal League a few months ago, and our incentive program is actually featured in the video that they show to some of the other municipal leaders around the state, and that was really great to see, because I think Comer City's on the cutting edge with this one.
I love it. I just love every time we're out there. And Mr. Mamet will actually be doing a presentation in just a few minutes. Okay, motion and a second. We've had our discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We now, did I miss anything? Oh, would you mind reading it before we approve it?
I will read it.
That's the new thing, we're just started this week, right?
Exactly. I will read it for you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2011-31, a resolution approving extension of rebates and benefits for economic development.
Excellent. So it's been read. Does anybody want to change their vote? Seeing none, it's still passed. Thank you. Next thing, we move on to study items. Mr. McBroom, the first one's on Heartland Urban Gardens presentation. I am so excited. I was out two Saturdays ago, before the rains came, helping put in the one that's at the library, Urban Garden. It was just, you know, a hard day work, but when you're done, you feel so good at what you've done. Mr. McBroom, who will be presenting?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor. Erisally Hinton will be here tonight, presenting on behalf of Heartland Urban Garden. She would like to provide you with a progress report on the group's efforts to establish a community garden in the Reunion neighborhood.
I've heard of that. Who would like to come forward? Nice to see you. And I know yours isn't the same as what we did at the library, but it's the similar kind of operation.
That's correct.
It is, and it's hard work.
Thank you. Well, good evening again, Council. Again, my name is Erisally Hinton, and I'm a Comer City resident, and I'm also a member of Heartland Urban Garden. And I'd just like to start with, with a quote from Louise Nevelson. She's one of, she was one of the most important American sculptors in the 20th century, and the quote is, "Life isn't one straight line. Most of us have to be transplanted, like a tree, before we blossom." And I chose that quote because we're part of a community, and we love Comer City, and all of our residents are part of this wonderful community project that we just started, and it's called Heartland Urban Garden. Just wanted to tell you a little bit about who we are. We are the residents, obviously, of North Comer City, and we're working to create a community garden on the vacant lot behind Landmark Academy. Our mission is to provide our children healthy food and vegetables we grow ourselves organically. Also, we'd like to provide a, a garden where our children can get their hands dirty and fully understand where their food comes from. We also wanted to let you know that we have about 50 Reunion residents that are part of our members, that actually signed up to be part of this community project. So there's a lot of interest and excitement. And it's also really great for our community to be involved in a project like this. Wanted to tell you a little bit about the garden plan. The garden plan is to create a garden that will encourage healthy living and increase our community and local partnerships by forming a community garden that will be responsible for the planning, design, upkeep, and harvest of the garden. Also, to improve the beauty of the land and create an environment that is healthy for the community. I think one of the most important things is to get our children involved, with other kids outside, by providing them with a community project as an educational experience. And just wanted to talk a little bit about, about the implementation, and we'll go by phases. Phase one is actually a planter box that we started already between two homes, and this is a picture of it. This is actually between two neighborhood houses, and this is part of the, of the planter box. Obviously, it doesn't have any dirt in it, but that's what we're going to be doing. And this is going to be a starter, a starter garden. Phase two, beautification, and that's hopefully where the city comes in with your guidance. Phase three would be the first community garden, and phase four is the second community garden. Okay? And again, the planter box really, it, it, it's really just the phase one. And let's go to the, the next slide. Phase one, again, the planter box shown in the previous slide, HUG built and financed this planter box in between two neighborhood houses in the Reunion Development. This planter box will be utilized to start an organic garden, like vegetable seedlings, and have a garden, have garden classes for our children. This is a temporary alternative, since we don't have access to the land yet, but it's really, it's just a really cool project. Phase two is beautification. On this picture, you can actually see that vacant lot behind Landmark Academy. I don't, probably don't need to tell you, I don't know if anybody has been over there. It is full of weeds. It is an empty 5.4 acre lot. And phase two will be the, the actual planting of the garden. And this is just, this is just an animation. This is not the actual plan. This is just a scope and a phase that we just wanted to present to you, okay? And with the cities, with the Council's assistant, assistants, we would like to act on the City Manager's idea and begin beautification this year. We ask that Council give direction to staff on how to proceed with this phase. It would be great if we can grow a community plot of late-season vegetables this year. And some of the ideas would, might include shrubs, native grasses, and perhaps just a few trees. Phase three would be the first community garden, and as you can see, that would be expanding there. And again, this is just a, an animation to give you an idea of, you know, the scope of what we're looking at. In phase three, spring of 2012, break ground on another area of the plot. Add additional trees. Maybe we'll have our first rose garden with benches. Add an additional children's box, and maybe options for gardeners. I mean, I'm a beginner, beginner gardener, but there, I know there's a lot of people in our community that are expert gardeners, so I think that would be really, really exciting for other people. Phase four, very ambitious, this would be our, our second community garden. And spring of 2013, break ground on the remaining lot. And obviously, for those expert gardeners, you would leave, follow roughly half of the land we have used previously. And then maybe complete a first phase of an orchard. HUG request. We are here to have, obviously, the city help us or donate the land, and again, we just have a plot number, and this is behind the Landmark Academy, and also help us in assistance or guidance on how to water, provide water at a reasonable cost. This is really just an example of a community lot in the middle of the property. This would, can I give you an idea of what, what we're looking at? Visualize it. Now, this would be the community garden in the middle of the plot. Other residents can come in and, and help us use that with their dues as well. I have another example as well. This is an example of a plot by a member. We do have fees, and the fees to become a member will, will help us actually buy the seedlings, the garden tools, and, and maintain the area as well. And also, it's not just our residents that are involved. We also have local organizations and businesses that are really excited to help us with this project from the ground up. And, and obviously, would be Landmark Academy, the Food Bank, because we will definitely be donating some of our harvest to local food banks. We've gotten great response from Adams Community Garden Co-op in Thornton. We have also local businesses that are really, really interested in this, and one of our main contributors is Pinnacle Gardens Nursery in Brighton. They have actually donated some of the seeds for our planter box as well. And again, I just wanted to thank you for your time and consideration of this community project. We're really, really excited to, to get your assistance and your guidance on this.
Okay.
I'd like to introduce Michael. Michael is part of our Heartland Community Garden, and he has, he's, he'll, if you have any questions, questions and answers, he'll be able to help you.
Okay, I'm sure a few of the Council will want to speak, but I think presently we have four in the city. So we're real excited, and what I like the best is when you go in there, it's, it's a whole mix of people, you know, and you get to talk to people that ordinarily you probably wouldn't have. It's been pretty exciting watching some of the others, and, you know, real rewarding. Mr. Bullock?
I just need to get some clarification on the ground and the land that I know was dedicated as a school site, and it's from a city. Is the school willing Landmark Academy or School District 27J? I don't know which one would be the appropriate one to turn the land over to you for an urban garden, or at its sometime, if they needed to expand, would they be putting you out of business as an urban garden?
Yeah, those are all good questions. So the land's owned by the city.
Right.
The city defers to the school district.
Right.
The school district, or has, the school district has right of first refusal. The school district's policy defers to the local schools, just as a matter of policy. Landmark is owned by the corporation out of Michigan and National Heritage, I believe. They said they don't expand. They're, they're, first of all, they are on board. Principal Carlton is very much a supporter of this idea. I saw him today, he's still a big supporter, wants to be a part of it. He actually wants his classes to come out and have plots and participate in it. He said that as a policy, the corporation never expands, that they build what they need, and they never go so far as to even add a trailer out back. So, as best we can tell currently, you never know what the future holds. It doesn't appear that the schools will be, in fact, the schools are supporting us.
Okay. And being that the city has the land and it's been dedicated as a school site, I would need some clarification from the city, I guess, or somebody. What is the process on this?
Okay. And just so that everybody understands, this is study, and we won't be making any decisions tonight, but all of these questions, like Mr. Bullock's bringing up, will have answers that'll have to come back before we can make a decision. I just wanted you to know, you're not going to walk out with a yes or no tonight. It's, because that's not how it's on the, on the agenda, but just so you understand. Mr. Bullock, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just...
Yeah. No, you're fine. Go ahead. I just didn't want them to think we were going to make a decision on what you were saying.
Okay, Ms. Stevens, I think, is about to give me an answer.
Good. Okay.
Well, a couple of things. One, obviously, to the extent that the city was, was going to be allowing them to use this land, we'd have some sort of lease in place that would, would cover some of the issues. For instance, because it is dedicated to school land, what would happen if the school did decide that it wants to expand regardless of, of the representations that are in, in place right now? There may be some issues that deal with the zoning and whether you can do agricultural in that particular location, and those kinds of things that would need to be worked through as well. So there are some, some things that would have to be worked through.
Okay. I will defer the rest of my questions until other council members have a chance to ask theirs.
Terrific. Thank you. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, good evening. Thank you for this presentation. I think it sounds very beautiful. Some of my questions Mr. Bullock has already asked, and we're waiting for some of those answers. When you were talking about the water being affordable, would the city be partners in paying for this, or exactly what did you mean by this?
Great question. We're open to all options here. We, we met with the City Manager, Jerry Flannery, as you know, and he was very receptive and very helpful with some ideas. And the beautification was his suggestion. Perhaps we could start with beautification. Now, did specifically get to the water? What we were planning to do, if we could have gotten a lease this year, we were ready to just cart water in on a truck and kind of water by hand the hard way. All right? Now, obviously, it doesn't, that seems like a long shot for this year, whether we can get a lease this year or not. But when we told the City Manager that we're prepared to go to that length to get water there, you know, he, he realized that because we're willing to just pay for what water we need, maybe we can strike some deal. I'm, I'm getting up to speed on water in Colorado, ERUs, et cetera. One big request we would have would be maybe we could borrow ERUs, kind of year over year from the city, maybe like a, a year at a time, or however we need to do it. I'm just throwing out suggestions here. I'm open to all suggestions on how we can do this. You know, the City Manager had suggested that we figure out how much we were going to pay to fill that tank to drag over there. Maybe it was going to be $1,000 a year. So maybe we put in the first $1,000 on the water, and from there, we work out an arrangement with the city. We're open to all options that the city may have.
Right, and these arrangements will take place, and we'll know more later on. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Scanlon. You know, this is only about a block and a half away from where I live, and let me know if there's anything I can do to help you. I need some lessons on how to make things grow. I planted several trees that have not made it. I had one tree out in my front yard that died, and I got a notice saying that this is a dead tree, so I had to paint it green, hoping... is a dead tree, so I had to paint it green, hoping that it would come back to life. But it didn't, and so I had to take it out. But I can use all the help that I can get it, and I'll be glad to help you guys. I need to learn how to grow things. I have a lot of trees in my yard, but I need to, I got about 25 maybe, but I'd like to be able to plant some more, too.
I'll, I'll contact you offline and make sure we get you signed up as a member.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Marino?
Thank you for the hug, members, for coming tonight. Ms. Stevens, you bring up an interesting point about zoning and agriculture. Is it, the two urban gardens that are located, there may be more, I don't know, but...
Four now.
Four?
Four.
Wow, in the, in other areas, are those not subject because they are on property that is not owned by the city?
If I might answer, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Marino, the, the land development code provides some, some latitude within the residential zoning districts to allow this type of use on a limited basis. We have researched the reunion, planned unit development, and I believe it would be an allowed use. I believe it's, it's been considered a use by permit. So, there is a zoning approval process that, that would be necessary before the community garden could be established in this area.
Great. And I had heard some, someone bring up before that this area is also used for retention, is that correct? Or is it just open land?
I don't believe it's intended as stormwater detention, but that would certainly be part of our research before we brought back anything formal.
Great, completely understand.
If I could, if I could jump in there? I, I think one corner of it is, right now, there's a, a little pond going because of all the rain we've had, so, and of course, we would factor that in, not use that area.
Thank you.
Your, your water problem might be solved. Well, I just, you know, I have had the pleasure of, of attending a few of your meetings and am in, and so, I'm so impressed, because this is something that's coming up from residents. The citizens are, are taking this project on themselves. And I've always been kind of a, a distant supporter because I, you know, I have a bamboo, bamboo plant at home, and I somehow managed to kill that, and those are the most resilient of plants. So, don't want to get involved in a community garden for fear that I might bring destruction. But I, I really appreciate what you're trying to do, and I'm definitely a supporter, and I, I think, you know, this council should give direction to staff to look at ways to, to work with you and to make this, this project affordable and, and timely as well.
Ms. Carson?
Well, thank you for the presentation. Michael, our, Mr. McBroom, can you tell me with these four other community gardens we have, how are they receiving water? Do you know? And who's paying?
I don't know offhand where the, the rights for the water came from for those community gardens. I do know that, that the city's not been an active partner in, in those gardens.
Okay, thank you. And I also want to wish you well, because I used to think I was an avid garder until I moved to Commerce City in this sand. Something about this sand is making, it's very difficult to keep things alive, so I wish you well. And if you give classes, I would like to attend, so...
That's, that's a good idea, we'll make note of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Marino, do you have another comment?
Just the other piece of your presentation that I really admire is your partnering with the food bank, food banks in the city and in the county. You know, those areas, it's so difficult to get fresh produce into those areas, because usually it's, you know, people donate canned goods or non-perishables, but sometimes those aren't the most healthy meals to be eating, so I really admire that aspect of it. And I just want to actually ask the council or perhaps staff, do, do you need further direction tonight in terms of council support for this project in, in looking at ways that we can partner with them?
It's certainly council's discretion how much direction you'd like to provide. We're certainly not hearing any dissenting opinions. We'll, we will continue to, to work with these folks, to explore options, to bring the project to fruition.
Fantastic, thank you.
Mr. Bullock, did you have further questions?
And not wanting to be the Debbie Downer or rain on anybody's parade or anything, but, and there's that big butt in the room. As a council and as a city, we've got to take baby steps on this, because anything we do sets a precedent for what everybody else is going to come in and ask us to do. And so, I, I mean, I totally agree with this, and I mean, I was thinking about, of big blocking off the streets and selling the produce, but then I started thinking that we better back up, because we have to consider water, we have to consider permits and everything, because if we do it for you, I can guarantee you there'll be another group that says, well, you know, and so, we have to take, we have to make sure we do everything correct in this one, so when the next groups come, because if yours is successful, I guarantee you, there'll be a place over in Fonterra and out in the Eastern Reunion, and they will come back and they will model your success in order for us to assist them also. So, as a council, I want to be fully on board with this, but I just want to make sure that we get all of our information straight before we walk out on a plank that we can't get back from. But as it stands now, I haven't heard anything, except maybe for water, that would be a hindrance or anything, as long as the site is one of these, the site and water are the only two things that would hold this up. So, and thank you so much for your presentations and for coming in, and if, as soon as we learn what we can, can and cannot do, we will be there, and you will get your information back from us. Thank you.
Mr. Marino, are you up again?
One more.
Okay.
Just wanted to agree with Councilman Bullock. We absolutely do need to do our due diligence and make sure that we do everything right on this, on this project. The other thing that I really enjoy, and that R. Sully mentioned, is the partnership with the school. I think it's so important to teach our kids the value of healthy eating, of being able to grow your own produce. I think that's, that's, has some really exciting opportunities for the school district as well, and it's great to see that they're a partner on this. But yeah, I just wanted to, to echo my support for what Councilman Mac, uh, Councilman Bullock said, that we need to make sure we do our due diligence, but that, that doesn't mean we're not excited about it. That's, that doesn't mean that we're not encouraged by everything you do, you are doing. We just need to make sure that we, we have our, all of our ducks in, in line, and, but I would ask that staff continue to work with this group and give us a report back on, on progress being made.
Are you working with Denver Urban Gardens? Is that one of the groups that you are working with?
We have talked to them, yeah. Then they...
Terrific, because they were a big help in this getting started down at the, at the library.
Yeah.
You know, they've done this a lot. And I sit on the board for health and wellness for metro mayors, and this is a big deal for the whole metro area, so we'll find a way, you know? Mr. McBroom, I take it you don't need any more direction, and you have all the contact information you need from this group, and you're on your way.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for coming down, I appreciate it. And nice presentation.
Thanks, we appreciate it.
Our next presenter probably needs no introduction. Mr. McBroom, did you want to introduce Mr. Mamet?
It would be my pleasure to introduce Sam Mamet. Sam is the executive director of the Colorado Municipal League. In visiting with him last week, I understand he's worked for CML for over 30 years, which means he began with them sometime during junior high. He's been the executive director for over six years in that capacity. He's, he's obviously interacting on a daily basis with municipal officials around the state. And as part of the city council's lead-up to its retreat on June 13th to make some tough decisions about your 10-year long-range financial plan, Mr. Flannery thought it would be appropriate for Mr. Mamet to attend tonight, share some of what he's learned from his travels around the state. After Mr. Mamet's presentation, I would also like Greg Clements to talk to you for a few minutes. City council and some prior discussions has talked very informally about the idea of ballot initiatives as a possible, a way to, to generate some additional revenue for key city projects. And I'd also like Greg to share some of what we've learned in prior bond issues that the city of Commerce City has done over the last several years. But first, let me introduce Sam Mamet.
Mr. Mamet, it's always nice to see you.
How's that?
Terrific.
Good. Can't see me, but you can hear me, so that's always a good sign. I have the idea for what I want to talk about for my Chinese dinner tonight. I got a great fortune out of my fortune cookie. It's this one I want to talk about. The wise thing to do is to prepare for the unexpected. That is something for every mayor and city council member in the state of Colorado. We're going to talk about the unexpected, and we're going to talk about planning and vision and all these things that you do so well here in Commerce City. I'm honored to be here tonight, Mr. Mayor, and other honorable members of the city council, to talk just for a few minutes, and I want to take no more than 15 minutes, and then take questions from you, if that's appropriate, on some of the things that you are working on. When I first was contacted by Mr. Flannery some weeks ago about coming tonight, I, of course, was very enthused about doing that, because I've been a fan of Commerce City for many years and have had a long involvement with this great community over the years I've worked with the league. And he shared with me the council priorities that you have already started to develop in the course of your retreats and goal-setting, and I just want to articulate them for people listening here in the audience and perhaps peeking in via the internet. Your priorities are to develop a balanced and vibrant city economy, effectively provide services and amenities, and enhance quality of life, and position the city for continued growth. Craft sustainable partnerships that benefit residences, residents and businesses alike. Finally, create a community built upon a culture of leadership and excellence. Those are visionary goals, those are laudable goals, you're to be applauded for those. And there are many cities that would be envious at the moment for what you've already decided to prioritize. And what I want to talk to you tonight about are some of the ways that cities are trying to deal with the economic environment in which we all find ourselves. And there's a little packet I prepared for you, and I think staff also got some material to you in advance. We, you have a terrific, there's not only terrific leadership up here in the front on the dais, but you have terrific leadership within your staff. And just sitting here tonight and listening to some of the presentations, you have great leadership in your community with lots of really neat people who live here. We prepared a white paper two years ago when the recession hit us hard in Colorado as it did throughout the country, on what our city's doing. And we coined it, "An Economic Crisis is a Terrible Thing to Waste." It always has struck me that in a time of the unexpected, and none of us expected this to hit us as it did, that that's probably a great time to stand back, say, well, are there things that we can do differently? And we've certainly tried to do that as an organization at the state level, and for those not familiar with the league, we're a statewide association of 265 cities and towns in the state. Commerce City has been a longtime extremely active member of our organization, and we appreciate that. And I get a chance to travel all over the state and visit with your colleagues, as I did this afternoon, for example, at a meeting we had up in Loveland for a bunch of the city officials up in northern Colorado, and I'll be doing the same thing out tomorrow in Lyman with a bunch of smaller towns out on I-70. And a couple of things that we identified, instead of reacting to the short term, take the long-term view. You're trying to do that with these goals. Instead of making across-the-border arbitrary cuts, which we see as a generally typical approach that many governments take, make strategic cuts that preserve the core mission and look at underperforming programs. Instead of making decisions at the top of the organization, we say, consider being more collaborative, including the creative energy of all staff, as well as members of the community in managing the problem. Instead of expecting to finance government in the historical way, and this is going to be a challenge as we get into the conversations of planning what your future needs are in Commerce City, explore innovative manners for financing government. And two more, instead of managing the expenditure side only, looking only at spending, manage the revenue side equally to the extent possible. Now, our reliance on the sales taxes, cities and towns in Colorado, is very difficult. We are unique among states in the union because of the extraordinary reliance that cities have on the sales tax locally, as opposed to relying more strongly on state-shared revenues. And finally, instead of operating with the same business model, consider using hard times to pursue organizational change or shed outdated business practices, and clearly your goals exemplify that. So, we, we're guided by three principles. Principle one is engage both employees and citizens in identifying the core mission of the organization of the city and structure future budgets around that core mission. We've got some examples I want to talk about. Principle two, explore and implement innovative manners of financing public services. I want to talk about that for a minute. And then finally, explore and implement alternative, more efficient means of service delivery. These are three principles that we think that cities and towns around the state ought to use to guide themselves as they consider the challenges we face in this economy. I've been writing a report for our board of directors. You know that we're governed by a 19-member board, and I'm trying to give them sort of a snapshot of what we've accomplished and where we've been at the last three, last six months of the organization. And I was looking at some economic statistics today. Colorado is really challenged as a state where our population is growing, but our job growth is not. In fact, we're losing more jobs, yet gaining more in population. It's a real contrast and conflict. And as the governor is looking at the state level with these bottom-up economic development program, sessions that he's having around the state, it's really focused on how do we grow jobs in Colorado? Where are they going to come from in the future? And obviously, that's something that you're thinking about in terms of some of the goals that you have developed. I want to talk specifically about our State of Our Cities and Towns report, and Councilman Marino was quite correct. We feature Commerce City in this report. One of the things, and it's in your packet, that was very, very real to us in the course of our survey work on this earlier in the year. We come out with this each year, and it's kind of a snapshot of the state of cities and towns in, in Colorado, was how much activity was going on, and this may seem intuitive to some people, but it jumped off the page for me, how much activity there is around the state among municipalities, large and small, in terms of promoting with direct general fund dollars their own city tax revenues into economic development, not relying on other people. There's two cities I, and towns, types of towns I work with in the state. Those that wait for things to happen, and those communities that make things happen. Commerce City is very definitely in the latter category. You make things happen, and that's why we focused on the incentive program that you have developed and that you've talked about earlier, and I didn't know that was on the agenda, but it's kind of serendipitous that it's in here and it's referenced. And it is a model for what other cities can do, and it's thinking outside the box. It's preparing for the unexpected, and I commend the leadership and the vision of the city in that regard, because you're trying to grow... the city in that regard because you're trying to grow the economy locally. And we have said repeatedly, "The way to grow the state's economy in Colorado is right through Main Street and right through our cities and towns of Colorado and to develop a partnership." And the report gets into that in more detail. And the final thing I want to reference, and then I'm going to get to some specific examples and make some closing comments, and then I'm more interested in what's on your mind. Our latest magazine, we come out with a magazine every other month, Colorado Municipalities, and this one's particularly good because it's all about the state of Colorado, the state of our state. And there's numerous excellent articles in here. But a couple that I think are extremely important as you continue to ponder future direction. I'm a big believer in demographics and understanding the demographic changes in a community. We're going to do a session on this at the conference next month up in Vail. But I think as you continue your work in advancing these goals, maybe inviting in people like Elizabeth Garner, the state demographer, and folks from the state demographers' office to talk about some of the actual demographic trends happening in Commerce City and working with your own excellent staff would be an excellent basis for some additional good information to see where this town is going demographically. We're an aging population in Colorado, all present company excluded. But the fact is, we are, and this has some tremendous implications as cities ponder future revenue ideas, on how to raise revenue, as people look at the services they receive differently. And this is an important issue. I mentioned earlier how to look at, we look at the expenditure side of things, but looking at the revenue side of things. I'm a big fan of some of the work that the City of Boulder has done, and we have a great article in here written by their chief financial officer, who's a good friend of mine, and I've known him for many years, Bob Bycomb. Two sides of the economic coin, revenue and expenses. It gets into some detail on how a city can look at both sides of that ledger. And I think it's important to talk about that. And also, as you plan for the future revenue needs of the city and however you want to proceed with future ballot proposals, to factor in maintenance and operation of those projects is extremely important. And there's a great article in here that Dave Zelenok wrote, who's a longtime Public Works leader, is currently the Public Works Director in Centennial, and it's worth a read about how to factor those things into the mix. I want to just mention one other thing, and that is, all economics is local. All economics are local. And there's a great article in here by Catherine Carell, who's the Executive Director of Downtown Colorado, Inc., who I had breakfast with this morning to talk about things we're doing collaboratively. And there's some really good tips in here on how local communities look at their own economies and what they can do locally to strengthen what they want to accomplish. So in terms of the principles that I highlighted earlier, engage both employees and citizens in identifying the core mission of the organization, otherwise known as seeking ownership. Seeking ownership. The answers are in not only this room, but consider the whole City of Commerce City a large room in which there are answers. And people need to seek ownership in the outcome of that. Durango, I mentioned Boulder, but Durango, another city that you're familiar with down in the southwest part of the state, is a great example, and we describe it in more detail, on how they engage citizens as well as their own city employees in trying to get through how the economy has affected their city budget and how they work through that. And it's a very interesting illustration. The City of Boulder, I mentioned a little bit about Bob's work, and they're further described here in the article. Looking at alternative sources of funding. There are a number of ways to look at your services, and I think as city and town leaders, we have to continue to think outside the box, and sometimes that's painful. Now, Denver is going through that right now in a debate in the city on how to continue to finance its library services. And there's some conversation about spinning it off as a library district. And whether that's appropriate or not, at least it's thinking outside the box. Aurora has looked at this within the context of some of its funding for various services with the creation of general improvement districts and trying to wean things away from the city budget and look at more creative ways to finance things. I think the other thing I want to mention, and you guys do such a great job of it here in the city, and the mayor walks the talk with his leadership in the Metro Mayor's Council, but in city government and town government, I've become a very strong believer and proponent that you solve problems locally, oftentimes by thinking regionally. And so to the extent that we can continue to look at regional service delivery, and the way we deliver services in a regional context is extremely important. And we pick on the San Luis Valley as an example. It's interesting. These are examples from all over the state. Large communities like Commerce City in an urban setting, more rural communities in the San Luis Valley, down in the southern, far southern part of the state, where they've created a council of governments down there, and really looking at alternative methods of delivering certain services in a more regional context between the counties down there and a number of the municipalities, not the least of which is what they're doing with their communications dispatch center with the state patrol. So I want to sum it up, and then I want to just see what questions you have because I've tried to give you the 30,000-foot level here. You've got to be thoughtful in your process, and these things you're aware of already, but they're always good to be mindful of. You've got to be thoughtful in the process, and that means putting things in perspective. You've got several billion dollars' worth of projects you want to address, and yet you have only this amount of revenue in which to address them. So you've got to be thoughtful and deliberative. You've got to take time to build a consensus. We're in an environment, and I see the world through my wonderful teenage sons, everything is yesterday. I've got to know yesterday. Everything is real-time, and we communicate in ways that I don't fully understand. But on things like this, we have to be strategic in terms of both taking time to build a consensus in the community. Remember, I said the answers are in the room, and the room should be considered the entire City of Commerce City, not just here in City Hall. And you've got to be strategic, and you've got to allow time for that support to percolate and to take some time. Now, one of the ways to do this may well be to consider, and I just throw this out as one option, as you look at the long-term challenges facing the city, think about creating some kind of a citizens' task force that involves a lot of different sectors of the community and a lot of different people, particularly perhaps those that don't always get involved on a regular basis. And let them look long-term of what your financial challenges are and what you believe to be the long-term needs and the specific projects facing the city. Other cities have done this with great success, and it's laid the groundwork for lots of successful ventures. I can think of Grand Junction as an example of that, where they had tremendous transportation problems in the Grand Junction area, and they desperately needed to expand their highway and road system. And they eventually built a Beltway around the city, quite remarkable, and with a significant bond financing package. And they did it with the hard work of a citizens' group that looked very long-term at what the needs were of that community, which is a pretty conservative community. And I don't say that in any kind of pejorative way, but not a community that looks favorably to every tax increase or bond issue that comes down the pike. And they were extremely successful. And that's an example of what I'm talking about. And so I know that you have some additional work through additional retreats coming up in the next few weeks, where you're going to be looking at a long-term financial plan for the city possibly. And all I just want to say is, not only is the wise thing to do to prepare for the unexpected, but as I am reminded often by my wonderful spouse of almost 20 years next month, that patience is a virtue. And it is in this regard. So I not only cite wisdom from a fortune cookie, but wisdom from my spouse as well, who is the highest power in the land for me. Anyway, I want to stop at that point. I've given you a broad snapshot of the challenges of cities and towns, and I've taken a little bit more than I should have in terms of time. How do you want to proceed? A couple of questions, and then you want to go into the next part of this?
Just so you have one more thing that you can put our name on in your little booklet, just so you know, we've already used these citizen and business committees.
Good.
And we actually have advertising out now for two new ones, both business and citizens.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. That's great. But these things take time, but that's excellent. I'm delighted to hear that. I wasn't aware of that, so that's good.
Thanks.
I didn't even need to be here tonight. You're already implementing it.
No, we like having you here.
Well, I'm glad to be here, too.
You know? And my board is lit up, so you get to talk to everybody.
Okay.
I was going to mention the same thing the mayor just mentioned, that we were ahead of the curve on the citizens' group and the business groups because we have already taken this room out into the community in asking for assistance in solving problems and challenges. And I look at those two things differently because I think there's some things that are challenges, and there's some things that are downright problems. And I like to handle them appropriately. But I like the fact that where you were headed, and that tells me that we are going in the right direction because we are already viewing the ideals that you've put forth and implementing them.
Well, good. I appreciate that feedback. Thank you, Renee.
Mr. Marino.
Thanks for your presentation, Sam.
You're welcome.
I had a question for you about the tremendous growth that Colorado has experienced, and Commerce City being one of those communities that were the fourth fastest in Colorado. You know, some of the cities in Colorado are the fastest-growing communities on the scale of the United States. How does that impact city services? You know, I see Commerce City particularly has done a pretty good job at keeping pace with the incredible growth and still offering and managing to give those services to the citizens. But can you talk a little bit about how other communities have dealt with that?
Well, if I may proceed with that, Mr. Mayor, that's a great question, and I appreciate that. You know, I'm often posed with the question by some people who I interact with, "Well, you know, your cities are no growers, or your cities are completely pro-growth." And what I like to point out is, you know, the city and town leaders that I deal with around the state, including those in this room sitting at the dais, are those that really think a lot about, not pro or con, but how do I manage what I have? And that is an issue because growth can both be a blessing, but it can be a curse because of the pressures that it places on a community, particularly one that may not be prepared to deal with it. And so the challenge that every visionary council and city has to deal with, like Commerce City, is not pro, not con, but it's coming, it's here, how do we manage it appropriately? And managing growth is a very difficult challenge, but it requires several things. I think it requires listening and working with an actively engaged planning commission and recognizing that the planning commission is where the initial rubber meets the road in terms of significant land use decisions. It also requires being in sync and aware of the work that your planning and community development and land use staffs are doing. It also means engaging with citizens in the community, whether those are homeowners' groups or folks in the development community, or as you heard earlier, the gentleman representing various of the neighborhood groups. And then it means, how do we finance this? What are the service demands? And then how do we adequately finance these services based upon the growth? And what are our options? And that means a little long-term thinking involved. And yes, Commerce City has the blessing of being a growth community, and, you know, you've been challenged with that, but you've really tried to establish a reasonable model along the lines of what I've described here. So those are some of the things that I hear about when I travel around the state and observe.
Ms. Teeter?
You are not only a fast speaker, but you're very vibrant, and you catch people's attention.
Thank you.
You cover so many different areas. Let's see, there are a few things that I believe our city already is doing, and the others that you requested or suggested, I'm sure that we would take that into consideration only to benefit our city. I agree with Mr. Bullock, and we do have the Business and Citizens Advisory Committee. And thinking regionally, we do this. This summer, we'll be having joint council meetings with the City of Brighton and the City of Thornton.
Right.
I like to have our neighbors as our allies instead of our enemies. That's very important.
I agree.
And third, I'm happy that you're happy with our council priorities. We spent many hours in
I know you did.
-- doing this. And for you to take the time to review this means a lot to us. Lastly, is, oh, one other thing, too. When you suggested that managing revenues equally with the expenditures, you need to come to our budget retreat. Mr. Tinkelmanberg makes sure that we do that.
Yes, I know that. I know he will.
Okay. And a question that I have, this Elizabeth Garner.
Yes.
Could staff, how would they get ahold of her? Can you get contact information?
Yes, I can do that offline with Mr. McBroom, and they frequently will address councils about demographic changes, and I think it would be valuable. And I'm sure that there are some very capable people on the planning staff here that can embellish on that, but we can certainly do that. And I appreciate your nice comments, Councilwoman Teeter. A couple of weeks ago, I was on TV with a news thing that I got mixed up with, and I won't get into it. But I had forgotten about it, and I was on the road, and my son, my younger son, calls me and said, "Dad, you know, you were on TV tonight." And I said, "Really?" Because I had forgotten about it. And I said, "What was I talking about?" And he said, "Well, I don't really know, but you sounded halfway intelligent." So if I sounded halfway intelligent tonight, then I passed the test, and I thank you for that.
You are very intelligent, sir.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you.
Mr. Benson, did you have something?
Oh, yes, Sam, I think
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you show everybody why we have an organization called the Colorado Municipal League.
Well, you're very kind.
It's all the cities working together, and your staff and yourself, helping all of us with ideas and sharing ideas, and that's how we grow.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Jim.
Okay. Thank you. I was just going to say, I didn't know how we were going to move into the next part, so I was going to turn it back over to you to bring us into that next topic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mamet touched on the notion of the time it can take to build community support for ballot initiatives. City Council has had some informal discussion over the last few weeks about ballot initiatives, and some are more straightforward. I think there's been some discussion about perhaps some changes to the charter to address board and commission, council members, rather, on some boards and commissions. You've had some discussion about potentially looking at a tax on medical marijuana. Those are more straightforward ballot initiatives. However, communities that look at ballot initiatives for larger revenue increases to fund significant capital improvements take longer lead time, and that's been our experience here in Commerce City. Again, Mr. Mamet touched on it, but I'd like Mr. Clements to share a little bit of our experiences with a couple of significant ballot initiatives here in Commerce City, and just hitting some highlights of those. We could certainly provide more background should City Council wish to pursue that topic further.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to build on Sam's, Mr. Mamet's focus, more to the local level, the council has scheduled the retreat on January 13th. Subject is a long-range financial plan and implementation of that. Subject is a long-range financial plan and implementation of that. In Rogers' terms, it might be called the elephant diet. There's a lot of work to be done leading up to the retreat and following to talk about priorities. It's not a matter of prioritizing, in my view. It's how do you manage all these number-one priorities with limited resources? Sam discussed the operations and maintenance challenges. We have to be able to maintain and operate what is built. There's some decisions about funding, and that's the key. As part of that process, it may be beneficial to start talking about electoral approval. As you all know, to increase the debt or to addition, add to the revenue base requires voter approval. We need to manage the revenue side as well as the expenditure side, as Sam suggested. So the council may want to talk about the process for successful results if and when it needs to be on an election ballot. We do have a couple of experiences recently. The 2004 increased debt ballot for the Prairie Gateway was- some of you members had experience with that election going back. And one that I'm more familiar with, well, both of them I'm familiar with, but the one that I like to remember is the 1995 one, when we did a sales and tax revenue bond to build the MSC and the addition to the REC Center. So it's not a simple task, and it takes a lot of time and work to do it right. And that's what we'll present if the council is interested in pursuing that. It should be part of the planning process, not only the priorities setting or managing. It might include talking about priority setting, maximizing opportunities, the background work and planning that goes into it. Financial planning is a big part of that, strategic planning. The attorneys get directly involved. And very critically, the public information and community support effort. City Council's support, obviously, is critical. So if the council desires, and with council's direction, the staff will prepare more detailed information for council's review on these past issues, and perhaps some other ideas that Sam has referred to that might be helpful in developing our own plan. And this can be presented at the retreat or at the council's pleasure if so desired. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Moreno, I know this was one of your things, and I would imagine you still want to bring this forward. Is that correct?
Yes. You know, I remain supportive of putting a ballot issue to the voters about a sales tax increase for medical marijuana. The piece of it that was missing for us was a loophole in the state law. That bill was passed at the State House this year. Will be signed by the governor shortly, and then we can create a licensing structure for those medical marijuana facilities to go into appropriate areas. And again, to remind the audience, those were not within 1,000 feet of residences, churches, rehab facilities, schools. There's a list of areas that, there's only certain areas where they can go. But in order to supplement some of the, I think, additional public safety, that will have to go into those, and in general, so it can be a revenue-producing measure, I do still support us looking at a medical marijuana tax increase.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Yes. I also would like to have some kind of presentation on what it would take to increase sales tax in the city. Because in my opinion, there are a lot of people that we have daytime traffic in this city that works here and then goes somewhere else to sleep at night. And it is an income for us as a city. As we've noticed in the last two months, Mr. Tinklinburg has been before us and shown us a long-range financial plan of all the funds we will need to create projects in the future. And we can sit and talk about them and talk about how we can fund them, or we can start exploring funding them right now. And I think that this is a time to start exploring funding them and seeing if we can get something on the ballot. And Mr. Moreno's idea is perfect because there's only, to my knowledge, two places in the city that would be able to accommodate any one selling or dealing in medical marijuana. And both of them are industrial areas that would not come in contact with any populations. But they're industrial areas. They do come in contact with populations, but not neighborhoods or churches or schools or anything like that. And if we can receive income from anybody that would ever want to do that, we should be prepared for it ahead of the game instead of trying to prepare for it after someone has submitted something. So I'm totally in agreeance with Mr. Moreno. And for our retreat on June 13th, I would love to see some presentation on what it would take to get something, not use tax, just sales tax on the ballot for the November election.
Okay. Ms. Carson?
Well, many of you know that I also would like to see a voter-approved sales tax for a designated funding source for parks and rec. I think as a city, it's very important to us to continue this live-well, healthy lifestyle. I don't know how we go forward connecting all these parks and trails and how we build another park up north or rec center. All the things that I know our citizens actually would really like to have and to use. And if you don't have a designated funding source for that, I just really don't know where it comes from. You know, I don't know how much of an increase that would be. If there was any way you could provide some of that information, I think that would be great. Like I said, when I'm out and talking to people, that's really what I hear out where I live, is, you know, the grocery store is one thing, but yeah, they really want some of those services up there. And I don't know how we connect all this, and I don't know how we keep it going if we don't have designated money going to that.
Mr. Moreno?
The other proposal that has been floated that I know that hasn't had the best reception on council is removing council members as voting members of boards and commissions. And that's something that I'm still highly in support of. Planning Commission, when I attended their meeting just last week, the planning commissioners are going to sign on as a body, that they would like to see that put forth to a vote of the people because it would be a charter amendment to change that. And I'm sure, you know, Mr. Mamet can attest to this. It's something unique that Commerce City does, is having council members as voting members of Planning Commission. And, you know, from what I've told of the history of it, it's something that perhaps was left over from when we were a statutory city. But, you know, Ms. Stevens has counseled me time and again that it would hold up in the court of law, but something just doesn't seem right about deciding a case and then somehow being completely unbiased and deciding it again as a council member. Something just, normal logic doesn't sit right with me for that. So that's something that I would still like to see us discuss and consider putting to a vote of the people.
I was sure glad you brought that up. I've been battling that one since I've been on council. What I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is yes, we definitely want to do something at the retreat, and it needs to be on sales tax, on medical marijuana, on changes to the charter, and putting a sales tax to a specific use. All of those, if you could give us some examples. Also timetables. I know prior to me being on council, I was the chair for doing Quebec Street. It's not easy. It's really time-consuming. And so if we have the deadline dates, at least we know what we're shooting for. Does that give you enough direction? And did I miss anything? Okay?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next item, in case anybody out in the ether world doesn't know this. Tony Johnson resigned last week, and we have, because of the charter, we have 30 days to get a replacement. Mr. McBroom or Ms. Stevens, I don't know who's going to kind of give us a rundown on where we are, what we've done, and what we need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're exactly correct. 30 days is a very limited timeframe in which to fill a vacant council position. Since Mr. Johnson's announcement last Monday night, a number of staff people have been working very hard to understand the process the city has followed in similar situations in the past. We've been studying the city's charter. Ms. Bauer would like to present an update of that research and give you some guidance to help facilitate your discussion tonight about the process you'd like to follow this time.
Okay. Mr. Moreno, did you have a statement first, or?
Just quick, I just want to point out that tonight was the first night that during roll call, Ms. Bauer did not call Councilman Johnson, and it hurt just a little bit to see that. But I'm glad that he's enjoying his retirement, well, soon-to-be retirement, and wish him well.
Okay. Ms. Bauer, we're on to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Natale, Members of Council, Laura Bauer, City Clerk. It's funny that you should mention that, Mr. Moreno, because as I was calling roll, I did have to stop and pause for a moment because I did almost call Mr. Johnson's name for roll call, so. Since some of you on council have not experienced a vacancy on City Council here at Commerce City, I've been asked to provide you with some information on filling a vacancy here in Commerce City. Our charter does provide for billing the council vacancy as far as providing a timeline. As Mayor Natale and Mr. McBroom both mentioned, that timeline states that no less than 10 days and no more than 30 days, a vacancy must be filled. For us, that timeline, or, excuse me, for us, that 15 days is June 15th. What the charter is silent on, and our municipal code is silent on, and City Council procedures are silent on, is the process or the procedure on how to fill that vacancy. I've been here a little over five years, and in that five-year period of time, this is our third council vacancy. What I can provide you with is the historical process that has occurred. And that historical process has been that staff has advertised on behalf of council for that vacancy. That advertisement has asked for letters of interest from those citizens that meet the criteria of filling a council seat to submit a letter of interest. We've set a deadline, generally two weeks out. So we have started that process for you, and we have done that. We have advertised that there is a vacancy, have asked for letters of interest. Once we met that deadline and have received the letters of interest, then my office has scheduled interviews with council for those folks that have submitted letters of interest. Council has interviewed, and then, at a regular business meeting, council has made that appointment official by motion and by vote. The charter says that the vote must be by secret ballot of a majority of the council seated. You now have eight members of council seated at the time that the vote will be taken, so your majority vote will be five. That is what we have done historically. We have set that date at June, as June 3rd, which is a Friday. That then leaves two meetings, the meeting of Monday, June 6th, and the meeting of Monday, June 13th. If council wishes to follow the historical practice that we have done, you could appoint either on June 6th, or June 13th, if you wanted to do it at a meeting. Please keep in mind that if council wishes to make that appointment on June 13th, we need to call a special meeting for the purpose of making that appointment by vote. Because at last week's meeting, council moved and voted to change the meeting of June 13th to a study session. So in order not to call a special meeting later, we would need to have a motion at some meeting, for practical purposes, it would be easier, to schedule a special meeting on the 13th for the purpose of that, and then you could go back to either before or after, in the middle of your study session, and then move forward with other business. So that's the information that I have to provide to you this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Teeter?
Thank you, Laura, for that information. So you're, would be Friday, June 3rd, would be the interviews?
No, that's the last date.
No, we have not set up a time for interviews yet. What we did was, we just started the process, kind of started a process for you because of the tight timeline. You could continue with this process, you could decide not to follow this process.
Okay. How many applications or people that are interested have you received so far?
As of today's date, I have received two.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Considering how packed our June 13th agenda is with the financial plan, I would support perhaps doing interviews on the 5th and then having an agenda item on the 13th so we could make the official appointment, if council would be agreeable to that.
And it's just a question. Do you think we'll get a response to get enough people in here on a Sunday to do the interviews?
This is Sunday. I want to do it on-
The 5th?
Yeah.
Oh, is that, I'm sorry, I meant the 6th, the regularly scheduled meeting on the 6th.
During the meeting or in place of?
Perhaps how we've done in the past, where we come a little bit early, do the interviews, and then, I don't know if that's agreeable to council.
Yeah, I guess, and again, I'm just throwing stuff out there. Does that keep someone who has a job from applying if we have to have them in here at 4 o'clock?
Sure.
And it's just a question. I'm not trying to say one way or the other. You know, might we want to do it on the 7th, you know, starting at, say, 6 o'clock?
Sure.
Then, because if it goes, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, if it goes as it has in the past, the choice pretty much comes to the top almost immediately. So it's not going to be a big challenge probably doing the appointment. The only thing would be is, if all eight of us don't show up for the interviews, it may take time for the people who are not here to say, "Yeah, I agree," or "I don't agree." I don't think we're going to see very many people who we don't already know. I could be wrong.
Excuse me, is the 7th the Planning Commission meeting?
See, now, that's the kind of stuff that we need. I was just picking another day. Yeah, we're not going to want to do it on a night where that is.
And, Mr. Mayor, to that point, perhaps, I'm just throwing out ideas, but- And, Mr. Mayor, to that point, perhaps, I'm just throwing out ideas, but the Monday, the 6th, is that today?
Yes.
Monday, the 6th. Maybe we should just do the interviews in an open, public meeting. It actually might be helpful for the public also, who's watching at home, to see who is interviewing, how they answer questions. I think that could actually be a real benefit.
Okay. We may go down to seven councilmen or councilpeople. And we can get two interviews at the same time. Sorry, sir. That's, yeah. And we have in the past done these in the back as an open meeting. We haven't been at this camera, so that might be something that Mr. McBroom will have to work out. Can we set up tables down here in an interview? Because what I don't want to see is us up here and some poor person down there feeling like we're picking on them. That we could set up a little different interview setup here. And I know we can, because we do all kinds of stuff here, but that's a great idea. I wish I, you know, I don't have my calendar here. What does the 6th look like, Mr. McBroom? Ah, good. Because if it's a really light night or a night that we can't, that we could move things, that would be perfect. Go ahead, Ms. Teeter, and then Mr. Bullock.
Yes, I'm in agreement with that, what you just suggested, having it on the 6th. And I was going to ask what our schedule looked like.
Yeah. Mr. Bullock, did you have anything?
My only was it was going to have to be the 6th or the 10th. And the 10th is a Friday. And because those are the only two days open that week.
Me too.
In the evening, when we can actually benefit the community and benefit ourselves with the time to do it. The rest of that week, we have somebody doing something on a committee or meeting every night.
Yep.
And Thursday is reunion outreach.
Yep.
So we either have that Friday night, the 10th, or Monday night doing a council session.
Yeah.
And so if we're going to pick Monday night, what we're going to have to do is either compact the meeting and/or just make this interview session. Well, and we don't want to give, we want to give everybody the fair chance and time.
Right.
So we don't want to make it seem like we're hurrying to get to our business. If we're going to do it during a meeting night, we have to put it in our minds that we're going to do it right.
Yep. Mr. McBroom, do you have that calendar up yet?
Based on the most recent City Council work schedule, it looks like about a 90-minute meeting, given agenda items that have already been submitted.
And is there anything that is absolute definite on a timeline for that evening? Something that can't be moved to another night?
It looks to me like there are some items that could be moved. I'm not sure by looking at the schedule if they all could be moved, but I would think we could move a majority of them.
That would be wonderful, especially people who have not been involved in an interview outside. These are not as easy as they look. They're not easy for the people you're interviewing, and they're not easy for the people doing the interview. They're pretty tough. So if we can move most or everything, that day to just do interviews, it would be wonderful.
One moment, please.
Yeah. And I can't imagine anybody on council really not wanting to maybe have a short meeting.
We are looking at the same.
Yeah. So I'm just waiting on here. I know I have everybody listed here, but I'm waiting for some response from Mr. McBroom first.
Ms. Bauer and I were just confirming, we were looking at the same schedule. There was a significant item scheduled that night originally that is not going to happen that night. So there are a number of what we would consider smaller agenda items that don't look like they would take much time. We would certainly look to move as many of those as possible.
Okay. That would be wonderful. And again, if we only wind up with two interviews, well, for one night, we'll get out of here early. Mr. Bullock, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Mr. Marino?
Well, as much as I love an early meeting, I hope we have 50 interviews.
Well, no, that's true, yes.
But I actually just had a question for Ms. Bauer or Michelle. Has the story run in your hub yet about the City Council vacancy? Is it going to?
Mayor and Members of Council, your hub will be running this week, Thursday. They ran out of space last week. We also have purchased an advertisement, not only in your hub, but also the Sentinel and the Blade. And then last week, which will run in the print edition, the Sentinel did publish this in both papers.
Excellent.
So it's all coming together.
That's great. I know, you know, your hub is a big item read by the community, so that's really great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, well, I think as Mr. Marino mentioned, we don't know how many people we're going to have to interview, and it's going to take at least, I would say, 10 minutes per interview. I don't know whether we're going to have five, or 10, or 20. Kind of makes a difference as to when we schedule this, I think.
In the past, your interviews lasted 10 minutes.
I'm sorry?
The last one, we had, the last council vacancy, we had 17 applicants, or 17 letters of interest. And your interviews were approximately 10 minutes apiece.
Right. So I wouldn't think that, there's no reason to believe we're not going to get an equal number this time. I don't know, but I guess we'll know by the 3rd. Hopefully, we'll know something before that. And I guess you'll tell us next week. Well, you can't tell us next week because we have no meeting. So it's going to be June the 6th after the deadline. That's when we'll find out. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Teeter?
Yes. The questions that will be asked, are they going to be the same? Do we direct you? Can we submit questions we would like?
I am, that's up to you. I don't have any questions from the past. Those questions were developed by council.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm happy to serve as a center point for you. If you would like for me to put those, you know, want to submit your ideas, put them together, whatever you would like to do.
Please, Ms. Stevens, just, you're going to need to kind of call in on this, but Ms. Teeter, I think your idea is a good one. If we have questions, we could send them to Ms. Bauer. Then is it, here's the problem. How do we get those questions back to council so that we, as a group, can say, these are the three questions or the four questions that I think are important, without doing anything on an open meeting rule?
Yeah. You know, it is one of those things you have to be careful about.
Yes.
I think probably what you'd want to do is alert Laura to those questions, and then she can send those all out. And you could do that the first thing on your meeting on June 6th, before you do your, do the actual interviews. Is one of the first topics is, is to say, okay, the list of questions have gone out, and I'm going to ask you all to rank them, you know.
Okay.
And you can rank them beforehand, so then you can get, you can give it to Laura, and you can do the top five vote-getters, or four vote-getters, or whatever you want to do. And then that decision is made during the open meeting. Does that make sense?
Okay. Does? Mr. Bullock, did you have a comment?
I was still.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Teeter.
It's okay. If that were the case, if we could possibly meet a half hour early to get that out of the way, would everybody be in favor for that? Like at 6:00 instead of 6:30?
That could work. Good. Mr. Bullock? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Ms. Teeter.
What I was going to say is, everything that we want to do ahead of time, questions and everything can be submitted before the third deadline. And people keep saying the 6th is the deadline. The deadline is June 3rd, which is a Friday. The 6th is the day we're going to interview. So we can turn in the questions throughout the week, and we can have them all in and say, we get them in by Thursday, the 2nd. And then they can get back out to us, and you, we can already be reviewing the questions. And then when we get there a half an hour early in an open meeting, we don't have to, we do not have to have the questions in an open meeting. We have to have the questions we're going to ask in an open meeting. But we could review 100 different questions in private, and then we'll it down to four questions that we're going to ask in the open meeting.
Ms. Stevens, that was my question.
Yeah, it's the decision on making which, it's not really an official action of the board or anything along those lines. But when you're talking about public business, you're supposed to be doing it in an open session. And so, public business being the sense of what kind of questions you're going to ask these individuals. And so here's what I would say. You can, you can send all of your questions. You're right. There's no need to wait till last minute to send those questions. You can start sending them earlier, and that's actually, I think what I would prefer, and probably what Laura would prefer, is that you get these questions to her. Whatever you're thinking of individually, you send to her. Then she can send out, or the City Clerk's office can send out, here's the list of all the questions that have been submitted. Each of you review them individually, and you do your ranking, you do your ranking, and everybody brings that ranking to the meeting on Monday. And then at that meeting, in an open session, you can kind of give the results of what questions were what. Does that make sense? There's a tabulation that goes on.
Okay.
Or, Karen, if this is possible too. The other thing that they might be able to do is, they might all have their own questions, bring them to the meeting or whatever, have them, make sure that they're not anything that would, that would create any legal challenges, legal problems. And then they could each ask their own questions.
Except, yeah. I think we need to ask the same questions of each candidate.
Right. But if Mr. Bullock had four questions?
Yeah.
So if they were?
Just another option.
If you had your one question, but we want to make sure your question isn't the same.
The same as yours, yes.
And then, you know, I don't understand exactly what you're saying, but I got a notion that a lot of us think along the same line, saying, so you might get five of the same questions, and you cut them down and we, you know. But I would like to expedite this, so when we do get to the meeting, it's 6 o'clock, we will it down to the number of questions we want to ask in open meeting right then and there.
Yep.
So we have that ready to move forward with the interviews.
Good. Mr. Marino?
I actually just have a practical question, Ms. Bauer. When the motion is made and the majority of vote of council occurs, when then is that prospective applicant sworn in? And when do their duties begin?
I might have to refer that letter to, or question to the city attorney. Let me, hold on. I have the charter right here. Let's look, I can look here first.
I think the charter just talks about them being appointed within a certain amount of time, within 30 days. Council must appoint?
We could appoint on the 13th, but they may not start for a week.
Their last week of freedom?
Yes.
Yeah.
Once they get appointed, they've started.
Right. There is no.
They are a member on the 13th.
Yeah, what I don't want to do is force somebody to make that arrangement. If there's 10 people that we've interviewed, we appoint somebody on the 13th. I don't want them to, what if that happens to be the day they're out of town? I want to give them the option of showing up on the next day.
Anybody that puts in your application, be here on the 13th. Don't be out of town. Because you might be appointed, and if you're appointed.
I will also say that the charter does specify, and I will, Ms. Stevens can say something if she needs to. It does say that, the charter does say that the appointment is made by written ballot, by a written ballot.
Correct.
Such appointment shall be decided by secret written ballot and a majority of vote of the members of the City Council.
Okay.
I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Ms. Carson?
Lauren, I don't know if you can answer this, but in the past, applicants have not been able to prepare for the questions, so that we haven't put those questions out in front of them a couple of days ahead, so they can prepare. They, it's just on the spot.
Code interview.
Code, yeah.
Ouch.
Thank you.
Mr. Marino?
So it obviously states the process by which they are appointed, but there has to, if I'm not, if I'm correct, there has to be some swearing in, though, correct, or no?
Well, you will swear them in, but the charter indicates that you need to appoint them within. So the appointment takes place, you're going to do the interviews, assuming you'll tabulate, you'll make a decision, and at that point, you'll do a motion to appoint that person. Obviously, then there'll be a swearing in, but you'll met the 30 days at the time that you make the decision on who to appoint. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, I would just agree with Councilman Bullock. If you apply, please be here on the 13th. And I think, you know, it'll be like throwing someone into an ocean, but it'd be good for them to be there for the financial plan, because that's going to be a huge cornerstone of what we do this year, so.
That would, you're right. You're correct. Yeah. So we would probably do it in the very beginning. Will we need the judge?
I can swear in.
You can? Oh, hey!
I have in the past.
All right. Mr. Bullock?
I have the power. I have the seal. I'm able to, I'm able to assist with that.
Could we also, and this, seeing how CML is the next week, if the person appointed would like to go to new members' class up at CML and get some training on being a new City Council member, can we reserve a slot for the person to go on? If they don't go, we save the money, but if they do want to go, at least they have that opportunity?
What a great idea, sir. Mr. McBroom?
We will check into the logistics of creating a space for that newly-appointed council member.
Good. And if rooms are tough, we can always get them in with the new guy. Sorry. Then we wouldn't do that, sir. Okay, so I think we're okay. Mr. McBroom?
Just one final comment about questions.
Yes.
If it is your intent, and it sounded, I heard general consensus on holding 10-minute interviews, that doesn't leave a lot of time to ask a lot of questions. So as you're thinking about questions, I would certainly recommend that on the 6th, you try and agree on two, three, probably four questions maximum, so that you can try to keep those interviews within that 10-minute time limit.
Yes. And the other thing is, as, it's a 10-minute interview, but it takes time to get them in and get them out. So as you're scheduling them, just give us a little bit of time, because it's really ugly when people are waiting out there for 35 minutes. Ms. Stevens?
I just wanted to remind, since you're moving your, the starting time for your meeting, you'll need a motion as well to change that timeframe for that meeting.
We can do that. Ms. Teeter?
I'm ready to make that motion unless there's other questions.
Okay, well, hold on, because I still have two more people on here. But you can make the motion when we get there. Mr. Bullock?
During the interview process, the interviewees that are not being interviewed at the time will be sitting back there and then come out for the code interview, correct? And, because they shouldn't be sitting in the audience, listening to what the questions are. I would like them.
Sequestered?
Okay, sequestered in the back, where when we go and get them, because.
Fair's fair, right?
Yeah. I want this to be a completely unbiased process.
And because of a challenge that we may have had in the past, would it be okay that there are no cell phones back there? Okay?
Yeah.
There was a challenge at one time where somebody was texting like crazy. And it just makes it, you know, so.
Who'll be the cellphone police? That's the question.
Yeah. We can make it, we'll, yeah, we'll make it, Mr. Marino. Yeah, try that. How'd it work for you? How'd that work? Okay.
We'll have the security gentleman in back do that.
Okay. Looks like all the questions are done, so I'm open for a motion. And the motion needs to say that we're going to start at 6:30. Is there any? I'm sorry, 6 o'clock? Is there anything else that needed to be added to it? We need a special meeting on the 13th? Is that a separate motion?
Okay. On the 6th is when you're going to come early to ask about the questions. And then you're going to do the interviews on the 6th. Is that right?
Correct. Yes.
So I would have one motion for the meeting on the 6th, to say that you're going to convene early, the meeting on the 6th.
Okay.
And yes, if you're going to do the appointment during the 13th, then you're going to need to set up a special meeting to start, and whatever time you want it to start, on the 13th.
Okay. That will, let me, does anybody in the audience want to guess who's still up here on my board here? Mr. Marino?
Yeah.
I just want a little clarification. So on June 5th, we will begin early. That half hour in the beginning will be to.
6.
6.
Sorry. 6. Sorry. 6. That half hour before we begin will be devoted to narrowing down the questions. Then we will have an item on the agenda where we interview the candidates, preferably out here, so it can be televised as well. And I think your suggestion was a good one, not us on the dais and them there, but a more informal setting.
At one of those kneeling things like you have at the church? That could be kind of cool.
There you go. And then, then actual action for appointment on June 13th. And we will need a motion to add that to the, or we'll have to actually call a meeting to order, correct? Since that'll be a study session meeting. Michelle's nodding, and I'm going to go with her. So we'll have to call a meeting to order briefly, to make the appointment, and then go back into study session.
And if, and if I hear you and Mr. Bullock correctly, that person should expect to stay here to go over our long-term financial plan.
It's going to be, or he or she...
Or she.
It's going to be sworn in by Ms. Bauer, and they're going to...
Sit up here.
Sit up here, and I'm not moving.
You're not?
I like this seat.
Okay. Well, that was your call. I was going to let you advance towards the middle. Okay. Now, we're going to go to Ms. Teeter. Make sure that we catch everything on these two correctly. So Ms. Teeter, we're just right now on the 6th.
Okay. I make a motion to convene early at 6 o'clock PM on the meeting of June 6, 2011.
Do I have a second, Mr. Marino?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, to convene at 6 o'clock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Mr. Marino, did you want to make the motion for the 13th?
Yes, I will do that. I move that we convene a meeting on June 13th. The agenda, oh, Ms. Stevens is...
Special meeting.
Special meeting.
Special meeting, sorry. I move to, that we convene a special meeting on June 13th to appoint the vacant city council seat.
I need a time as well.
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock? Right in the beginning?
Right at the beginning. When did you want to do it, Mr. Bullock?
I don't know. It's just like you're saying, if they're working.
I know.
I know, but everybody's in here at 3 o'clock.
Okay. Mr. Bullock, did you want to second that motion?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Second.
To have the meeting on the 3rd be a special meeting, where we will appoint that person. Discussion, Ms.?
That's the 6th.
6th? 13th, wasn't it?
Would it not be possible to swear them in on the 6th?
I'm sorry?
It's not possible to swear them in on the same night that you make the appointment?
No, because we'll just be doing the interviews.
But I thought we were going to make the decision that night?
We may. The problem is, if we don't have eight people here on the 6th, we're going to need to convince whoever's not here that that's where they want to vote. So that's the challenge. I mean, we may come, we may all be here, and we may all look and say, yeah, that's the person we want, makes it easy. But I'm just afraid, look at tonight. I mean, we have two people missing at city events, but they're not here. If we were to do the interviews tonight and vote, they're going to feel as if they had no part in this particular item. So I just want to make it open for everybody, so it, you know, nobody feels slighted out of this.
So do you.
No, we have a motion and a second, to have a special meeting at 3 PM on the 13th, at which time we will do the appointment and the swearing in, and then they will be, hopefully, staying here for our long term. And again, this position only lasts through the election, okay, which is when Mr. Johnson would have been term limited. So please, if you're doing this, thinking that you have a two- or four-year time, that is not it. You have about a four-and-a-half-month dime, just enough to be, never mind. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. That motion passes. So we're all okay then. We're online, we're on time, and everything's going terrific. I love it. Next item, administrative council business. This is not reports. This is where you need to have some action from council. I'm not seeing anyone, so I, oh, Mr. Benson?
You know, I just wanted to bring up something. There was a practice that this city probably had for the first 37 years of its existence, when we've had citizen communication, and that is that the council could engage in some sort of dialogue with the person coming up to speak. And for some reason, that changed back in '07. I don't like that. I think it's cutting ourselves off from our people, or we can't discuss anything with them. We just have to refer it to the city manager. I'd just like to hear some discussion from other members of the council, and see how you feel about that. I just, it cuts us off from the people in the audience.
I would suggest that since that is not on the agenda for tonight, that we can move it to another meeting, that staff would bring that up as a discussion item at another meeting.
Well, nothing that's brought up during administrative council business is on the agenda.
It's brought up, and we have taken some action on it. So it's not that we're not taking action on it. We're saying, yes, that probably is something we need to look at, and that we could do it at a meeting where it's actually an agenda item. My feeling is, we have two people missing, and we should have everybody here to talk about that particular item.
I'm for it.
Mr. Bullock?
I didn't think that we would, on something like a policy item, we don't have to have it as on agenda. We can just discuss it as a council, because it's council policy. This isn't, Mr. Benson's right in the fact that we can talk about that tonight, even with two people missing. We don't have to wait, because it is council policy, it isn't city policy.
Okay.
And so, as a council, if we would want to discuss it tonight, it doesn't have to be on the regular agenda. It is something that, I was going to, just like he was saying, I would like to be able to refer things to staff, but I would like to converse with the people that are standing in front of us, and be able to interact with the people doing citizens' communication. I agree with that. But I know that the staff issue will be referred to staff in order to solve the problem, or help the person along. But I think as a council, we are really not doing our full duty when we don't, when we aren't able to actually interact with our constituents when they come up for council communication. So I basically agree that we should be able to communicate with them, but if I know whatever the staff recommendation is, or remedy, or whatever it requires, if it's in staff's hands, staff will take care of it. But we should be able to interact with our constituents.
Okay, Ms. Teeter?
Okay. My thought with this, I agree. I don't like when somebody comes up here, and by me not being able to ask them questions, they are thinking I'm not interested. However, I have been on here long enough that there have been several times, they've been up here 45 minutes. I think we have to put some kind of a timeframe. I don't know. And usually, they wouldn't go past three minutes. I, you know, they're just in and out. But there have been discussions lasting almost an hour, and you have three people coming up. And one time, it was like almost three hours for citizens' communication. So you need to factor that in to that as well.
Yeah, there are going to be exceptions. I know. They're going to be, sometimes it'll take a little bit longer than other times, but most of the time, and I've been to a lot of meetings when I wasn't on the council, and watched that procedure work very well for a couple of years. And I really, I can't remember how the procedure got changed, but it worked from, I guess, 1970 through 2007, for 37 years, and all of a sudden, it got changed back in '07. I don't remember how that happened, but it shouldn't have happened. And I'm hoping that we can get this on our agenda at some point in the future, and let's talk about it further and have a vote on it.
Mr. Marino?
Just to echo Councilwoman Teeter, I imagine that the system we currently have in place was a compromise between both sentiments, their needing to be guardrails, but also allowing citizens to have time to voice their concerns. I will agree that it does feel a little impersonal to me when they come up and talk, and we have our own restrictions by council policy. So I would be in agreement with, let's consider a system that's a little more lenient than what we have right now, and have that as a discussion item for the next, a future meeting.
Yeah. That'd be great. And I actually was here when that happened, and the problem was not on that side of the dais. The problem was on this side of the dais, that we would have a council person on this side, and a council person on that side, each having to have the last word. And we would get a lot of, I agree with, I agree with, I agree with, I agree with, and. If the council can decide that we don't need all that redundancy, it can work. And that's why I think we need to have everybody here where we could sit down and talk. Because I have the same challenge. There's a lot of times you want to talk to that person, and that's not our rule. But the problem is, the problem is not them. The problem is us. If we can decide that we don't need to battle everything that they bring up on our side, it would go fine. The stuff that Ms. Teeter is talking about was never the person at that mic. It was us. Because they would bring a problem, somebody on this side would say, I agree with you 100%, and someone on this side would say, I disagree with it 100%, and we'd have this vocal battle going on, which looked worse than the interaction. So that's, that's going to need to be something we're going to need to decide on, on how we'll deal as a council with that particular item. So I would really like to see it discussed in a time where we have time to actually discuss it, and figure out what the rule is, rather than to just say, okay, it's home free, do whatever you want, and if customer or citizen communication takes three hours, it takes three hours. You know, whatever works. Mr. Bullock?
I totally agree with what you just said, and that is when we put it, we stop it ourselves and put it in the city manager's hands and everything, because we aren't up here to solve the problem. What we are up here with is to pass the problem, or the challenge, or even sympathy with somebody along, and move on to the next person.
Yes.
If we see we're going to get mired down in redundancy or an argument, that's when we need, as a council, to bring it to a stop, and let the, put it in the city manager's hands, or someone's hands, and let them handle it.
And just, and you were here, sir, and I know you'll understand my example, but when the mayor would try to stop those discussions, there would be a loud outcry from one side or the other, saying, you can't cut me off. We need, as a unit, to be able to do that. So that's why I'll bring it up in another, and we can handle it at that point. Is there any other administrative business? I have something. We've gotten a request from Access Housing. They are presently doing a 10-year plan to end homelessness. Mayor Pro Tem Snyder sits on that board, and I sit on it also. They are trying to raise a $40,000 for a planning process, and a total of $100,000 for planning and implementation. They are out of sync with our Community for a Lifetime Grant program. They went to Brighton and sent them a letter saying that they were looking for support, and Brighton gave them $3,500 in partial support of the 10-year plan. They've come to us with a letter that I guess went to the city manager, I'm assuming, asking for $5,000. It's now come back to council, because it is out of sync with Community for a Lifetime Grants. If council sees a benefit to look into this further and come back with a short presentation from them, or just to tell them, you have to stay in sync, I'm not sure what our answer should be. Mr. Marino? And, Mr. Bullock, you're still up there. I just hit it twice.
Okay. I'd really like to take a look at the letter and absolutely look into it.
Okay.
You know, I think it's a great cause, and I certainly don't want to be vested by Brighton, so.
Yeah, I know. That was my thought when I saw. I think that's why she put that in the letter that she sent to the city manager. Mr. Bullock?
I would like to see a presentation, because it's not only Commerce City and Brighton. It's Commerce City, and Brighton, and Adams County, and there's a whole bunch of funding mechanisms. And I've looked at Denver's plan to end homelessness, and it's really comprehensive on the steps they take. I would love to see their plan before we move forward. But I would love to see them get in the sync of the Quality Community for Grant, because didn't they receive a grant?
They did receive a grant for a different program that they were doing. So they know how the system works. This is just a matching program that they were trying to do. What I'm bringing to council is, do we even want them to come and present something, or just to tell them to go back and get into the system? What I'm hearing is, we would like a presentation before we're going to make any decision, then that's fine.
And we still might tell them to go back and get in the system.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Oh, yeah. There's no decision. I'm just saying, if it's okay with council, then staff will get ahold of Virginia at Access Housing, ask her to come down and do a presentation, and then the council, not probably in front of Virginia, maybe at another time, to say, yes, we want to do this, or no, we don't. What I would ask from staff is, I know there's always funds left in there for emergencies, if that in fact is the case, because as, for instance, if we were to agree to $5,000, we need to know where that money's coming from. We can't take it out of the back room where we keep the gold. And so, is that okay with you, Mr. McBroom? Okay with council?
Okay.
That sometime, and that's fitted into the schedule, if somebody get ahold of Virginia and say, we want a five-minute or 10-minute presentation, and what are you going to do with it, and why? And how are the other cities also involved? Because right now, the only one that I guess was in the letter was Brighton. Unlike you, Mr. Marino, you know, if we have to give them $3,501, it would be fine. Okay. Seeing nothing else there, I'm assuming there's no legislative update, since there's no legislative. Is that correct? Okay. So we're going to go to reports. Mr. Marino?
Just wanted to present on my attending, in place of the mayor, the Record of Decision Celebration for North Metro Line for Fast Trax. That's really exciting. It's one more step in the process for finally getting that North Metro Line up here into this area. I felt a little out of place, because it was held at the National Western Stock Show, and I apparently did not get the memo about wearing jeans and boots, and...
Oh, no.
So I came in a suit, but I made a joke that the only western wear I have was left over from my City Hawkins dance in high school, and that no longer fits. So, but it was a very good time, and it's exciting to see that process continue to progress. And hopefully, before long, we will be celebrating the groundbreaking of the North Metro Line. So, that's it.
Well, I'm glad that you went then, because I was in a suit already, and I'd have been on my way, had you not been able to go. You don't want to talk about Friday, or just not interested, or?
Sorry, I wasn't prepared. Friday was the Cultural Diversity Summit. I thought it was a great attendance, and really, we got to the core of some issues in the city. And I was really excited by the passion that people brought to discuss different issues that extended, a lot of the issues actually extended beyond cultural diversity, which was exciting, because it was an open forum for residents and community partners to be able to talk about some of the challenges facing Commerce City, but also what makes us strong, and what makes us unique. So that was exciting, and thanks to all that attended that.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. It seems like I've spent a lot of time on E470 business since the last time I was here at a meeting, which was two weeks ago. We had a meeting on May the 12th at E470. We continued to discuss the speed limit's going to change on June 23rd. We discussed the issue of the off-ramp from southbound tower onto westbound Peña. Went to the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting on May the 13th at CDOT. And then from the 14th through the 17th, I went to a workshop on interoperability of roads like E470. Running a toll road might seem easy, but it's a very, very complicated process. I know in Texas, where this workshop was, they charge 50% more if you go on a license plate toll than if you have one of the transponders. Here, we only charge about 25% more, because they have kind of a captive audience down there of commuting. there of commuters. We don't have that. People have more of a choice here, whether they want to take the road and save time or not. But you learn a lot of things from people from all over the world. There were people from all over the world, Europe and South America, that gave presentations. It's very, very interesting. Had a meeting last Thursday with the E-470 staff, Mr. Flannery and Mr. Aker, where we specifically discussed the issue of the off-ramp from southbound Tower onto westbound Peña Boulevard. I guess the thing about that is, the people at E-470, at least the ones that weren't there, most of them weren't there 16 years ago when this agreement was reached, is that we do have an agreement that says that E-470 is responsible to build that off-ramp. And it's going to happen, and we continue to have meetings, and it will happen. And I hope I'll be able to announce the groundbreaking at some in the near future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for handling that for the city. Ms. Carson?
No report.
Ms. Teeter?
Yes, I have three things. First of all, I want to encourage anybody that, or everybody, to attend the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge grand opening this Thursday. It starts at 11:00 and ends at 12:30. There are many council members, past council members, totally involved in this, a lot of work, different boards and all. It's a very, very important day that we've all been waiting for. Secondly, Mr. Clements, before I commend your department, I need to know if this is in the city or not. I believe it is. It's Brighton Boulevard heading towards the cemetery, Riverside, where Sun Court parking is. It was before I went on my trip, and I'm telling you, that was the worst road I had ever, my car dipped into it, the whole road had fallen apart. So this morning, when I went to pick my melon up down Brighton Boulevard, I was going to call Greg, and it has been paved. It's unbelievable, good job. And lastly, I want to
We do have to give credit to CDOT.
Oh, okay, well, we'll share that with them, too. And lastly, but it's very important, this is to you, Mr. Baca, Chief Baca, thank you for organizing that meeting at Bell Creek about the stabbing. The people there feel so much more safe than they did before, and they only said good things about you, very impressed with you and your officers, and to have that many uppity to do's, whatever you want, higher ranks, they know how seriously you're taking this. And I will say this again, I know we have the best police department in the state. Thank you for your job, well done.
Mr. Benson, do you have something else before I go to Mr. Bullock?
I just had one other thing to add, if I might
Sure.
With your permission, Mr. Mayor. We also discussed at E-470, they're installing some devices about this big around and about this thick in one of the curves on the south part of E-470. It's a light that's embedded in the pavement. It doesn't stick up above the pavement, so that it's not going to be raked off by snowplows, and that's the problem in this climate. You go down south, and they have reflectors in the roads. When you turn onto a highway, it's like an airport runway that lights up for you. We can't do that here, because we have to have snowplows, and they'll just rake it off like a razor on your face. But this is a new device. Technology keeps advancing. It has an actual, it has a solar cell in it, so it's powered by the sun. No power is necessary to go to it. And you can put a white light going like this for down the center line of like Highway 2 or Tower Road. If you're putting it down the center line of a two-lane highway, you would put a yellow light going only back towards the traffic. But I know we discussed this last Thursday with Mr. Flannery and Mr. Aker and the E-470 staff, and I think that our staff is going to be looking into this to see if we might be able to get some of these installed out on Highway 2 and on Tower Road. The issue in the past has been, is it going to be compatible with snowplows running over this device in the wintertime without raking them out of the pavement? But I don't know about some of you, but driving at night sometimes, it's kind of hard to see a painted stripe on the roadway. At least for me, it is. And I would like to see this happen, but I guess the staff's looking at it, and they're going to, I guess, come back with some kind of an economic impact approach. Is that correct, Mr.?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
This really is, sounds bad, but I'm going to have to retract Ms. Teeter's invitation on Thursday, because that invitation is only for officials and executives with the ribbon cutting, and
When is the one for the regular public thing? Can you share that?
The one for the regular public was last week on Friday and Saturday.
And I was on vacation and unaware of it, okay.
If you look in the Denver Post for last Saturday, on the last section, they have a full article on the New Visitors Center on there, and it's the first page, and it shows it and everything, in color and everything, and inside. And they had the Film Festival this last weekend and this weekend coming up, and some of the films that they're showing are absolutely fantastic. If you can get out there and see those films. Some of them are only five or eight minutes, some of them are 82, 84 minutes, but they are such a diverse group of wildlife films, and they have a film on orb spiders. That's only eight minutes long, but you'll sit there and you'll be so enthralled by these spiders, what they do every night, and every day it gets destroyed, and every night they make it exactly perfect again. Okay, but that's spiders. But don't come Thursday, okay? I mean, please. We, as a council, have been invited, and Ken Salazar from the Secretary of Interior is going to be there to cut the ribbon, and within, we want to extend invitation to the Brighton City Council from Commerce City to be our guests there, because it seems like they were not invited by the wildlife staff. But we would love to have them there also as our guests, because Brighton sits right next to Commerce City, and some of the contamination that went downriver on, from the arsenal did affect Brighton. That's that, but I hate to retract the invitation, but it sounds, but we did. Okay, Friday, they had the Cultural Diversity Summit, and it was absolutely fantastic. Some of the people that were there, from Congressman Polis' office, from Congressman Pearl Mother's office, from every agency, and I don't mean just in Adams County, basically from around the state, sent people to this summit, and you got to hear from groups from all over on their ideal of what diversity is, and how it works, and how it doesn't work. But we've got to follow up on that, and there's also been requests to do a 501(c)(3) summit of all the nonprofits, a nonprofit summit, because all the nonprofits want to get together and see their strength and weaknesses of other nonprofits, and learn from them on how they do different things, and we've been asked to host it. So I think that is absolutely another fantastic thing that could happen that can enhance Commerce City. Tri-County had the annual NCC meeting last, was it Tuesday or Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, and that was very informative on the last stages of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal on the cleanup, and we don't like to say cleanup, we like to say
Remediation, that's a hard word for me.
Yeah, okay, the word that we can't say.
They say it on our rap.
Remediation.
Remediation, that's it. Remediation. It isn't a cleanup, it's a remediation. Boy, this sounds bad. And the Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refugees were co-partner in the Film Festival this last weekend, and the weekend coming up, and I'm on their Board of Directors. So if anybody wants to come out that's watching this, or is in the audience, and the Film Festival's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Friday from 6:00 to 8:00, Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 to 8:00, and they're in blocks of two-hour periods. So you can buy yourself a ticket, you can go online and find out what block you would like to buy a ticket for, or blocks, and buy it, and then just show up out there. But they had over 1,000 people show up for the opening of the Wildlife Refuge, and it was fantastic. The gift shop did banner days like they would during the Refuge Roundup. And so, it's going to be the center point of Commerce City, and we've got to make it, even though it's a federal reservation that is federally run, it's, we've got to make this Commerce City's shining star. And so, when people think of Commerce City, they think of coming here and seeing the Wildlife Refuge, and after they've been there, they're going to go around the world and tell people, "You need to come and see this, because just walk in the trails, you might have a coyote chase you." All sorts of great things are out there, so come out and see it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, this week Habitat for Humanities had a big event down in Affinity Park in Glendale that I was part of, and they're just finishing up seven homes here in Commerce City, and I believe they're going to have 10 or 11 next time. This coming, is it this coming Tuesday night on Ivanhoe, they're going to do another dedication of a house there. The same day I was in here, well, not interviewing, they had an open house for the candidates for the Community Development Manager, and I'm just astounded at the quality of people that we have attracted in the last, you know, five or six, seven years. It's been phenomenal. I mean, you just look at the candidates and go, yo, it could be anybody, you know? Wednesday, I met with Ms. Morris and the new, I don't know, CEO of the Flea Market, and they've taken a different view of their direction, which was very interesting. They're going to go back to where they've come from, but it was really nice talking to him. He's not actually a new person, just more of an active role than he had been in the past. Also at the meeting Wednesday on the Refuge, Thursday, we did a ribbon cutting at Douglas Colony Group, which was phenomenal. They have three different kinds of solar stuff up on their roof. It was absolutely phenomenal to see how some of this stuff works, and we have one of those gauges here for ours, I'm not quite sure where it is, where you can actually see how much energy, and if you can remember Thursday, well, I know you will, it wasn't the best of days, but there was still enough sunlight to build some energy up into that. And one of them is experimental, which was really cool, so that was really nice, and I really appreciate Mr. Marino filling in for me so that I could go there. Thursday night, and this is a tough one for me, Thursday night, I went to the 9/11 Freedom Rally that was held at El Jabel. This is a group that's going to be here at Dick's on 9/11, which is actually a Sunday, and their group is to honor and respect those who serve and protect, and I know I mentioned them at the beginning of this class, but some of the things that they brought up, we really need to get involved in. They're talking about unemployment for the nation is like at 9%, but when you look at the vets that are coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan, it's over 15% unemployment. They're having a tough time coming back, and, you know, they're talking about 34,000 active reserves are out there. There were 63 deaths in Afghanistan just from Fort Carson. And so, they're doing this event, they're expecting 20,000 people at this event at Dick's, and if you have any thoughts of supporting our troops and the police and fire and EMTs, this is going to be a terrific event, and it's on September 11th. Mr. Bullock, do you have a comment on that, or?
A lot of the vets that are coming back that are unemployed were guaranteed jobs when they left.
Yeah.
It's part of the Veterans Guaranteed Job Program. They leave, and they're supposed to have a job when they come back, and they come back and find out that their position's been filled, and there's no ramification for their boss. You know, you're going out and putting your life down for someone, and then you come back and you get slapped in the face by telling you you don't have a job anymore, and how do you live after that? And this is something they're expecting, so if you come back whole, all of a sudden you're made less than whole right from the beginning when you don't have your own job coming back. But I could preach on this for a long time, so I won't.
Good. But, yeah, this is something, this is an event that we really need to get around, and I know something that I do that I, I actually watch someone else do, and I've taken up the practice, is every time I'm out at the airport or in a big event, and there are soldiers going by, I make it a point to walk up there and say thank you for their duty, even if they haven't been serving in an active role, the fact that they're doing something for our nation, we need to do that. To end on a little better thing, I happened to go to a lacrosse championship on Saturday night right here at Dick's Sporting Goods Park. Phenomenal. You're throwing 20 guys on the field with sticks and a hard rubber ball. There is somebody that really needs to have their life examined, because these guys are coming off the field just bloodied. But as a good part, in 2014, we've actually won the World Champion Lacrosse Championships here. And just to give you some numbers, it's over 10 days from July 10th to July 19th of 2014. And I keep throwing this 2014 out, because there is this certain group of people that think, when you start working on something, that you start on today, and by Friday, it's done. These are things we, that Brittany and the city and we have been working on for a couple of years now, and it's for 2014. It takes us a while, but they're talking about 10 days, there'll be 40 national teams here, there'll be 250 world teams. They're going to have over 700 games being played out here, either on the fields or in the stadium. They're expecting 20,000 people from out of town, 50,000 room nights, 100,000 fans, and they expect the economic impact to the greater metro area to be over $50 million. And here's something, we started with working with lacrosse, and I say "we" meaning the city and lacrosse and all of this, to bring it to Denver, and it's taken us a little time to get here, but it's going to be a phenomenal event. They're having an event, not this weekend, but next weekend, another lacrosse event here, that'll be taking, that'll be a big event, Family Situated. The one Saturday was supposed to be Family Situated, except there was a small challenge with weather, so it was toned down quite a bit. But lacrosse is going to be enormous, and I just love that they're coming here. It's terrific that we're going to use this park and we get a lot, and the nice part is, you go out there and everything says Commerce City, which is just wonderful. I know I forgot the two of you again, so please, when Mr. Flannery and Mr. Gaylor come back, say, "I'm not picking only on them, I did the same thing to you two." So, Mr. McBroom?
Could I just say one more thing?
You can. Ms. Teeter?
I, Mr. Bullock, I hope this invitation is going to be correct, but I would like to invite everybody to the Memorial Day Parade on Monday.
Yes, excellent. Yes. Oh, and please, June 2nd is our Brighton Commerce City at Buffalo Run. Please, 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 if we can get good representation there, I'd really appreciate it. Now to you, Mr. McBroom.
Just an observation, it's significantly warmer in this room, in this seat compared to my normal seat, two seats over.
Yes, it is.
I'm sure it's just a ventilation problem.
Yeah.
You've made the announcements that I was going to make, the state's largest Memorial Day Parade is Monday, there's some announcements for council members here on where to be and when. An additional reminder, city offices, including the Recreation Center, will be closed on Monday, and because of the holiday, there of course will be no city council meeting on Monday. That's it.
Terrific. Ms. Stevens?
Nothing from the city attorney's office.
Whoa, it's okay. That's probably it. If there be no further business come before this, council will be adjourned. Please drive safe. Mr. McBroom, do you just have a minute?